1985 graduate. Mary Yule, a 1958 graduate. Angie R. O'Neil, retired employee of the district. Christopher J. Azera, attended schools in the district. Darlene Grethel, 1969 graduate of the district. Marjorie Buffam, a retired employee of the district. Laura Doolittle, a retired employee of the district. And Sharon Betters, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. In this speech, would you care to introduce the presentation from OCMBOSIS?
Certainly. This evening, our first presentation is Dr. Jody Manning, accompanied by Bob Crabtree, who's a BOCSIS board member. They're going to be doing a brief presentation on some BOCSIS programs, and I believe they may have some students to share some information as well. So, welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank superintendent's speech and your board member, Mr. Crabtree, for allowing us to come and talk about our partnerships. We are 1/23rd of North Syracuse, and everything is about partnerships and sharing students. So, opposed to her and me talk, we have a quick five, six-minute video, and then we'll
Public television was created to bring us the wonders of science, culture, and learning. And starting last year, we partnered with OCMBOSIS and OCC to create an embedded media and marketing career and technical education course that is truly changing the lives of the students who participate.
There's been quite a change in, as a result of this program. Really didn't have a sense of, didn't have initiative to take on anything that perhaps might be challenging.
The time that I entered into the schoolroom, that was totally beyond me. I saw like all the people doing each job, so really just kind of watched over everyone's shoulders. And I was like, I could do this someday. And that's when I realized that I don't have to dream anymore, and I can do what I've always
Students explore healthcare, OCMBOSIS new vision medical professions, highly motivated
Throughout my career, it never really made any sense to me why kids stayed beyond typical high school graduation year to 21. And it makes all the sense in the world here.
In the beginning, I think a lot of the students had great experiences with hard skate programming and out-of-state programming. What we were kind of starting to find was, our students needed a chance to apply what they were learning in those school settings.
When Alex was in the high school program, start thinking, what's going to happen when he graduates? What kind of opportunities are going to be out there? Because they're not similar to his typical peers. His sister had, you know, a lot of opportunities that didn't seem to be there for Alex, even though different. He was a boy, young man, who at that age, they're just ready for the next step.
us because the preschool, they were not in session, they didn't have a lot of kids. And Jesse accidentally fell into our room for help, and then just didn't want to leave us. We follow up with Jesse, and we will keep her. We're going to keep Jesse.
We support them not only in providing welcome with open arms from especially the School of Education. Be able to chance the dean of education's acceptance as an A.C. here on campus. First time that happened, students that come on campus as a transition student get the fabulous opportunities on campus that we never, ever received in a high school situation.
At Seven Valleys, we're working on the soft skills, we're working on thinking and being able to plan for the world problems that business has having strong partners in Portland or in the area, so that good experiences as they train their business partners. And we're also looking for where we connect more to business programs.
So, the video gives you a little flavor of the partnership and its true collaboration in 23 school districts, higher education and business for the sake of our students. Folders I left in front of you, I'm not going to go through that, but in each folder, detailed about the programs that everyone put together, again, through collaboration, our annual report, and a snapshot that shows the participation of North Syracuse in the respective areas and the budget numbers. Now, some of you know, some of you may not know, I'm only a part-time employee at BOCSIS. I'm split, I work for BOCSIS three-quarters of the time, and I work for State Ed a quarter of the time. And I'm not saying that to whine, or maybe it does sound like whining, but I want to segue in. The reason these programs are so effective is because we have strong leadership at BOCSIS all the time. And one of the leaders we have this evening is Assistant Superintendent for Student Programs, Colleen Vigiano. Trust me when I say, we are a very, very fortunate region, that she oversees programs from four years old all the way up to seven years old, from, you know, there's four preschool students to our adult ed. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Colleen Vigiano, and she's going to do some of the students to talk about their experience through OCMBOSIS.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're proud to have about 2,200 students come to BOCSIS from our 23 school districts, and we have many, many North Syracuse students who participate in a range of our programs. And we thought, what better way for you to learn about our programs, except to hear from them? So, what I would like to do is introduce to you first Angelina Butler. She is enrolled in our Lab Technician Program. We started the first Lab Technician Program in New York State, the first CTE program, because we realized, based on the data, that these are the jobs of the future, that our students would be very much employable. So, I'd like to introduce Angelina Butler to come and share her experience with you.
Everyone. So, first off, I'm Angelina Butler, and I'm a senior at CNS, and I'm in the Clinical Lab Tech Program at BOCSIS. I found out about the program through my sister. She was previously in the program, and she really enjoyed all the skills that she learned. In the CTE, in the CTE, in the CLT program, I'm learning so many important skills that I know will aid in my college education and career. I learned skills like phlebotomy, which is drawing blood, and other clinical laboratory testing, as well as many other important skills. Something I am extremely thankful for is my teacher. Through her example, I've learned the important values that are not only important throughout my career, but throughout life. I've been given so many wonderful opportunities, one of which is Skills USA. Skills USA is a skills-based competition, based on what you learn at BOCSIS. This year, I did a job demonstration, and through the help of my teacher and support of my classmates, I won first place doing DNA electrophoresis, which is DNA testing, which is really important in crime scenes and hospitals. Another opportunity is the real clinical testing we do. We often are able to collect specimens from staff to aid in our education. We collect specimens like blood and urine. It's kind of gross. We often are able to collect, okay, we go on college trips, and something I'm especially excited for are the internships. This year, I hope to go to Upstate and shadow in the microbiology lab. This program has helped me, this program has helped guide me and made me a better person. I now plan on going to SUNY Broom in Binghamton to get my associate's in the CLT, and then my biomedical science and bachelor's. And I also hope to go on to physician assistant school to become a surgical, maybe even a doctor. Just thank you for your time, and the North Syracuse Board of Education for this opportunity and your support throughout my education.
Thank you, Angelina. Next, I'd like to introduce to you Quinn Rivera. She is enrolled in our Innovation Tech Program that opened in September of 2014, which has a major emphasis on project-based learning and partnering with businesses to really have a real-world experience in your high school education. And Quinn has joined us tonight, in spite of being very sick last week and even hospitalized, she's still powered through to be here. So, we're very grateful for that. And without further ado, I will introduce Quinn. I'd also ask that Gretchen Belanger, our Principal of Innovation Tech, just come and maybe sit next to Quinn while she speaks. She's been a huge supporter. She also came from North Syracuse, so she's got strong roots here as well. So, please come forward, Quinn and Gretchen.
Hello, everybody. My name is Quinn Rivera, and I'm going to tell you some interesting things about me. I started at Innovation Tech when I was in ninth grade. Not going to lie, I was nervous, wicked nervous, just coming into a new setting, meeting new people, and it's a new start at my education. I decided to think about my new start at Innovation Tech and just how much I have grown, being a part of this type of learning environment. Innovation Tech has shown me, learning can be fun and educational at the same time. The traditional style of learning is teacher-driven, and it did not work for me. I enjoy and take away so much more from our student-driven, product-based, hands-on learning environment. Innovation Tech has allowed me to become more confident through being an ambassador for our program, public speaking, and project presentation. I have done a presentation about Innovation Tech and project work to leadership Greater Syracuse, approximately 80 business people, and PBLNY, approximately 300 educators. Before I came to Innovation Tech, I wasn't able to present in front of a small group of people, and here I am tonight. I have newfound confidence, which is now also reflected in my grades. I am on a high honor roll. To give you a better idea about my experience at Innovation Tech, I'd like to share with you my favorite project. It was last year in a class called Spanish and Wellness. For this class, I received two high school credits, Spanish II and Health, along with one OCC credit, Health and Wellness. We were put into groups, and we had to fill out a group contract. The group contracts are, everyone is assigned a role, we create expectations for group work, we list consequences for not meeting those expectations, and people can be fired and have to work alone. Each group had to choose a Spanish-speaking country, and then research its food and create recipes. For this project, we partnered with the producer Toby Oppenheimer from the TV show Anthony Bourdain: Parts Unknown. We brainstormed a list of questions, and then had a Skype session with him. We also had the opportunity to go to New York City and get a behind-the-scenes tour of CNN. It was a really great experience to travel to New York City and collaborate with people at CNN. Being at Innovation Tech has not only made my confidence go up, but it changed me as a person. If it wasn't for my Innovation Tech, if it wasn't for Innovation Tech, I wouldn't know what I would do after school. My old social studies teacher helped me realize what I am passionate about. She helped me decide what I want to do after high school. I want to become an FBI agent. I plan to go to OCC in September for two years, and then transfer to San Diego State to earn a four-year degree in criminal justice. Innovation Tech isn't just a school. I like to think of it as one big family. I'd like to thank the North Syracuse School District for giving me the opportunity to be an Innovation Tech student.
So, in closing, I just want to thank you for collaboration. Thank you for sharing your students. It's a responsibility we don't take lightly, and if there are any questions, be happy to answer them. If I don't know them, I'm sure Colleen will.
No, I just want to thank you for being here, and I especially want to thank the two students. I think hearing their stories really puts things in perspective, and you both did a great job presenting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Bear Road Elementary Building Planning Team presentation. Annette?
So, at this point, we'd like to call up the principal, John Cole. And John, you can introduce whoever else may be accompanying you. I see John Wojcik.
We have John Wojcik, our co-chair, and we have Peggy Parker. She's been an AIS and a reading recovery teacher, and is now an RTI staff member, and we could add on to that. But we won't. So, thank you for giving us the chance to share some of the great things going on at Bear. Going to a new school was exciting. The vibe is really awesome. What I really enjoyed was the focus between the adults to work as a PLC, to form a team, to come out with a plan, to talk not only about the needs of the kids, but the adult needs as well. So, we started out with that. We do happen to be the largest elementary school at this time in our district, a large staff in many, many rooms, and every single room is used. Did you want to talk about some of the data that was used as we, as our teams develop, and as they set goals, and they set timelines? They wanted to use good, solid information, so.
At where our kids start each year, we also actually get an opportunity to look where they ended up the year before for those older students. So, we took a look this fall and tried to take a look at the kids that were in Tier One. Those are the kids that are functioning where they should be, they're learning at the pace that we expect them to, and it seems like they're off to a really good start in September. So, I'm not going to read the numbers, you can see them right there, but what we did take a look at for our first graders was a part of the assessment of Ames Web called nonsense words. Those are literally what they sound like, nonsense words. They have to decode them, they are, they're called CV words, these are consonant, vowel consonant. They're very straightforward, decodable words. Second, third, and fourth grade for ELA, we took, take a look at an assessment called RCBM, which is a curriculum measure for reading fluency. It's a one-minute assessment. We give them three different passages to read, so technically, just really record the number of words per minute that they were able to read. And again, you can see our percentage of kids that were reading, you know, at what we thought would be a Tier One, a level. Then we assess again in January, so we just finished doing that. And for our kindergarten students, you'll notice there is a fall data. We looked at reading levels for them, and in the beginning of the school year...
Beginning kindergarten.
Beginning kindergarten. These are kids coming in, they don't even necessarily know what school is. So, we didn't measure where they were. We measured it, but we didn't, we did not calculate the percentage of kids that were reading at an F and P level. But we did do that this winter, and you can see, we have quite a few of our kids who are reading at a Level B or higher, which is really awesome. First grade, again, we looked at those nonsense words, and you can see that a pretty decent... You'll see some of the other grade levels next to second and third.
And the percentages went down just a little bit, if you don't mind.
They did. No, they did.
And we talked about this as a committee, and we looked at the measures, and we tried to figure out, what is that anomaly there in that second and third grade?
Because when you look at fourth grade, you'll see that that percentage has gone up again. So, it's definitely something that our building is taking a look at. We're paying attention to what works, and we're trying to figure out how we can make it work for those other two grade levels. That's our ELA piece. And then the math assessment, and we get up there. For kindergarten, we measure oral counting. It's simply how high can they count in one minute? We give, start one, two, three, and keep going until I tell you to stop. Then they also have to do a straightforward number ID. And for kindergarten, it's numbers one through... First grade, it's a little bit different. It's still these minute math assessments, but they have to find what number is missing in a series of first, middle, or a third number that's missing, and they have to... And that's between one. Then, another measure in first grade, and it's the same measure for second grade, they do a math computation, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's paper and pencil, they have eight minutes to... And you can see our numbers, we've got some that are going up, some that are going down, and we seriously need to take a look at that. For me, I'm definitely a believer in early intervention. We don't have support the way we might want it, but go ahead.
And also, and it's not just about, you know, what's happening with the kids, we are looking at, you know, what's happening for the professional development and the ongoing activities with the PLC. I mean, this is absolutely about tying student achievement to teacher efforts.
Yep. So, this is our third and fourth grade data, and they do a math, it says concepts and application, or layman's terms, just word problems. They have to read, there's graphs, there's multiplication, word problems, all sorts of different kinds of word problems. And then they do a straightforward math computation. So, we'll do the same assessment again in, I think it's mid... But meantime, again, we're going to try to really focus on what works, what we have to do as a school, teachers.
Yep, and to bolster up for our own professional skills, to help when we see kids lag in some of the areas. So, one of the great things about this is you're seeing so many pieces here really fold into the balanced literacy push that is district-wide and provides continuity of instruction for children. And as we get further into that over the next few years, we are really looking forward to the growth with children. The other thing that really stands out here, and without it being highlighted up there in text, the RTI wind block. That is something that, as I came to this building, I got so excited. It was the second week I was there, and I heard about the master schedule already having those protected times. And when we think about a grade level with that type of dedicated time, and then weaving in support staff, that's where I'd like to see the growth over the next few years, and that being married together even further. And strategies. So, doing serious work to make a serious impact with kids, and carrying that as a heavy load professionally, and then we're trying to keep in mind, we're working with children, and we're theming for them, and we need to also theme for adults. So, we took this approach to weave a little bit of fun into this heavy work. So, think about working with kids, and board games come to mind. Every PLC laid out their plan for the year, how to work as a team, how to set a plan, how to look at data, how to review what we've done. how to look at data, how to review what we've done, and then how to do that cyclically. That's what this example of a game board is, and this was one of our grade levels.
Part that we've all keep talking about is even though it starts and there's a finish, it doesn't finish.
Yeah, it's a cycle.
It goes back, and every now and again, it's go back two spaces. It might be jump ahead a space. Each of our grade levels is at a different point in here, just because we're human. But the needs of our kids drive where we are, but then it's the needs of us, you know, what do we need as this PLC, as this. A lot of times we can go forward, sometimes we go backwards, and we all know that when we finish, we're really not finished.
We will never be finished. So that's just a little snapshot about our work this year. Are there any questions?
I have a, maybe one. I see the strategies, you went through the list of strategies using with the students. What are you doing amongst and between staff? Imagine PLCs. I just wondered, where is there time to do that?
Okay. You know, I'm glad you asked this question because this had.
Oh, you're not really glad I asked.
No, I actually, Mr. Paul could tell you. I got, I was scratching my head the first few weeks when I was trying to figure out, how does this work? And of course, one of the things that stood out that told me I needed to learn this was the dismissal. The school gets dismissed from the gymnasium in order to free up grade levels of people. They can meet from 3:45 to 4 o'clock, and then other staff members cover as other staff members are supervising the children. So that's embedded in the logistical framework of how things function then. The mornings are done the same way. Different mornings of the week, you can have a grade level meet from 8:30 to 9:20. Other staff members cover to make sure those are supervised and safe and getting prepped for the day. So the structure of the scheduling, duty schedules, rosters on different days, like I said, I was scratching my head, and I really had to say, I need to see it work.
I can tell you, having been through it over the last couple. Tried to get to as many, the reading staff tried to get to as many of these as we could. And we, typically, we have a meeting from 8:30 to 9:00. Getting going, and boom, the kids are there, we have to end. So creative minds got together and figured out a way to extend that to at least 9:20. Amazing what those 20 X. Power of our conversations, knowing that it's not going to be interrupted by students.
Some of that, the groupings you do for the wind blocks, is some of that done in those time slots?
Some of it's done, I can't say the salad groupings, the. At right away, as soon as we can, and we'll start working with them, the tier three kids. Out the other group.
One of the other things that had me using my other hand to scratch my head left, how does that all work across the day? When you're having RTI blocks that are protected so that service providers can come and work with the grade levels to work with smaller groups of kids with more focused instruction, it absolutely is a tiering, a layering, a building from, building blocks that work on top of each other. And also, to still have time for service providers to meet individual needs of kids separate from those groups. It is a lot of minds and a lot of hands coming together, but there was a lot of planning across the year and a half or two years even before this passed on. So it's been a dedicated piece, not just from classroom teachers, from the entire staff, the entire staff pulls together for this.
Thomas just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Only because you said something in the presentation, oh, it's awkward for a moment. You said you wish you had more support, which I think is fine to say. I, no, I, I think it's fine because I, what bothers me about, and I don't want to sound cynical, but everything is always so wonderful in a lot of the BBT. Always somewhere where we can get better. So when you mentioned you wish you had more support, you mentioned. I just heard something to the effect about wishing there was more support.
Oh, I think, I think the support come, I think there's so many multi-levels of that. Some of it is support that we can offer. I know at one point I was. As this early intervention. My focus has always been on reading, but I do teach math as well. And just the nature of how this all works, we don't have math support at kindergarten or first or two. It's that, it's, you know, and it's all the things you always hear, the budget, and I'd love to have, we have a halftime reading person, have two and a half of us in the building. I'd love to make that be a third, but I know money is.
Oh, but that's, I'd like to hear that.
But those are all those, that's, that's the kind of support I'm referring to it.
And I would jump on that and say, you know, we're always wanting to reach that next child, and the next child, and the next child. I think that everybody wishes that it was limited staff and unlimited. But with what we have, I'm very fortunate to work with a group of people incredibly hard every day, and they're dynamic, and they go beyond what is required. And that's just, it's a warm-hearted thing. So am I doing the, BPT is a happy thing, yes. Did we also share that, eh, we're struggling with some data right now? We're also doing that. And we are going through growth stages, and across the next two years, our PLCs will develop further. We've got some really great models, and we are reflecting on growing each and every team.
I think, I think that's true. Our endeavor is, I, I'm a reader. I'm, I'm forever reading. So I've read, you know, a huge number of books about PLCs and RTI and all that, but not everyone has because they have other. So we're all in different places, and we're all, we're all trying to make it work. So sometimes I'm ahead, sometimes I'm way behind a lot of other people, trust me.
We'll get there.
But we're all over the place, and that's what. Bear Road staff, and I'm sorry.
Well, that's what I was just saying too. Other questions? All right.
One question.
Go ahead.
So you guys have a clean slate moving forward with a new building coming. Of your strategies that you listed for ELA and math, are any of these being implemented in how you want the building to be laid out in specific areas of the building?
All right. So I think that the, I would go back to when I referenced continuity of instruction. One of the biggest indicators for a child's success is continuity of instruction. So as we're looking at balanced literacy being further embedded in all that we do, that framework, those pieces, I think are real growth opportunities. I've had the opportunity this year to see some labs working in the district, models of that. I can't wait to see more of that in the district, and I also hope to do a little micro-study of that within our own building, transferring those skills of what's really highly effective for other people to take a look at and letting, letting the staff land at that. That's not a judgmental piece, that's a celebrate piece. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you too.
Hey, Keegan. Update on the 17, 18 budget, please.
Well, the budget always brings out a big crowd, so I appreciate everybody coming out. The, we've got a big agenda tonight. I'm going to review again a little bit of the governor's state aid proposal, talk about foundation aid, because I think that's the central theme of, of the governor's, of the shortfall in state aid. I want to emphasize that everything I want to present tonight is very preliminary. While the budget process is well underway, these are, this is the initial budget, these are preliminary numbers. So I'm going to talk about preliminary revenues and expenses. We'll talk about our vehicle bond proposition, fund balance and reserves, that's the financial condition of the district, and then some basic information on the vote and election and budget process timeline. You've seen this slide before, and I wanted to put it up one more time just to emphasize that while the governor's budget proposal does in fact increase aid to schools, the second bullet point you'll notice shows that about 70% of the total funding supports school districts categorized as high needs. We are not a high-need school district, and so going back up to the first bullet point, second, the first check mark there, you see that the governor does include, you know, his proposal does include a $428 million increase in foundation aid, but he carves out $50 million for the continued transformation of high-need schools into community hubs. And so while I don't deny that high-need school districts need additional funding, but so do districts like North Syracuse. We are, we are, while not high needs, we are certainly a needy district. And as you'll note in this slide, a lot of numbers here, but I want to just point out on the first line, our foundation aid is only increasing by one point, almost $1.2 million. That is completely inadequate when you look at this slide, which shows our foundation aid over the last 10 years or so. And so let me, let me pause for a minute and explain that foundation aid arose as a result of a lawsuit brought against the state called the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit. And a lot of hard work was done to determine the cost of a sound, basic education, and formulas were put in place to determine how much of that cost should be borne by the local community and by the state. And unfortunately, the state hasn't lived up to their end of the deal. School districts, there's, there's almost 300 of us that are not receiving the foundation aid that was contemplated by that lawsuit. And it's, it's a material amount of money. As you can see, this year, the 16, 17 school year, North Syracuse received $9.4 million less than that lawsuit contemplated in state funding for foundation aid. And, and it's putting tremendous pressure on our system. And I want to emphasize, in the governor's proposal, budget proposal, he wants to do away with this look at how much does a district need versus how much they're funded. He wants to change those formulas to talk about how much aid will be provided to schools in a, in a particular year. And I know that sounds like a subtle point, but what's, what's extremely important is that schools get the amount of aid they need. And the governor's budget proposal will eliminate that whole benchmark of the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit and what a sound, basic education costs. And so it's really important, we'll talk more in a moment about our, our event on March 9th, but it's really important that, that we recognize that the biggest single flaw in our state aid this year is the lack of foundation aid. So let's jump into our revenues, and I like to show these pie charts just to kind of show folks where our revenue comes from. So you can see that 42.4% of our, our revenue comes from state aid, and about 54% comes from the tax levy. So as you can see, that's 96, almost 97% of our, of our revenues. So we live and die by the tax levy and state aid. Just, just looking at some of the changes, overall, our total aid is going up about, I'm sorry, our total revenues are going up about $2.3 million. That's 1.48%. And, and that, that's inadequate given what our, what our needs are. The biggest increase is what I've been talking about, the, the general aid, which a big component of that is foundation aid. Looking at our revenue assumptions, again, what you're seeing tonight is aid based on the governor's budget proposal. We're hopeful but concerned that when, at the end of March, when the budget is finalized, we'd like to see North Syracuse get more foundation aid, and we think it's, it's due to us. On the property tax side, what we're assuming at this point, that the district will live within the tax cap. The biggest component of the tax cap is inflation, and the Bureau of Labor Statistics released the inflation number for the last 12 months, and that's 1.26%. And that's the big driver in our tax cap calculation, which I'll share with you in a moment. From a building aid standpoint, there's, there's two things I want to bring out. First, I've mentioned this each of the last three years, there's a state law in effect that says that the state will provide building aid based on assumed interest rates. So if we do a project and we're going to get our aid over 15 years, there has to be an assumption about what interest rates are going to be, that we're going to finance that project over. And the reality of it is that the aid used in the rates actually exceeds the market rate at which we've financed our projects. And the state is able to come back to us and lower our building aid based on that. There's a 10-year adjustment. They can, they can come and lower our building aid because the interest rates weren't actually that high as, as the original assumptions. And I know that's very confusing, but the state has deferred on that each of the last two or three years, and we're hopeful we'll do that again. But I need to mention that, that that's a risk that we have in our building aid. The other one is we're struggling with our building aid with New York State. We've been working with them over the last year to understand what our actual building aid's going to be, and, and we're in the process of reconciling that and in discussions with them. So you'll notice that our building aid is down, and we hope to have resolution of that and within the next, obviously, before the budget's adopted on April 10th. And I also want to emphasize that although we are receiving revenues from the Smart Schools Bond Act, they do not impact this budget. They're not part of the general fund. Let's look at the tax cap. So this is the same formula we've used every year. It starts out at the top with our current year tax levy. That's the 16, 17 tax levy at 82.8 million in, in tax levy. An interesting thing is the state looks at the, every single tax jurisdiction and determines whether that tax base has grown. And if it's grown, it seems like the municipality should have more capacity or more revenue to fund that. And so the state publishes this tax base growth factor, that's the 1.0082, and we apply that as we have every year. So we've had a little bit of growth in our tax base. They look at our pilot revenues, and everybody's probably aware that pilot revenues are payment in lieu of tax agreements. These are incentives for businesses to move into our area. And so this is contemplated in our, in our tax cap, as is the next line, which is the tax levy for capital. When we vote on every capital project, there's a local share. And so the concept here in the tax cap is that if the taxpayers have already agreed to pay a local share, then they shouldn't have a chance to revote on that project every year when they vote on the budget. So the pilot revenues and the tax levy for capital are adjusted in this calculation. And so at the bottom line, we end up with a tax levy limit increase of about $2.5 million or about 3%. And that, that is a $69 increase on a $100,000 home before star. And in, as we finalize this number, this was filed with the Controller's Office. I did receive today an update on pilot revenues from our attorneys, and we'll be adjusting this calculation slightly, but again, it should remain around 3%. Shifting to expenditures, again, the pie chart allows us to see where we spend our money, and we're a people-based business, as you heard from the, the Bear Road team tonight and, and the Bosse's folks. I mean, it's, it's about, you know, putting teachers and other staff members in front of students and helping them grow and, and develop, and that's, that's just, takes people. And so you'll see that 46% of our budget is the salaries of, of all of our staff. When you combine that with their benefits, it's, you know, over 77%. And so we're a people-based business, and that makes sense, that that should be the two biggest pieces of the pie. We spend about $14.5 million, or about 9% of our budget with Bosse's. I've been talking about our capital projects. That's the debt service. That debt service number is our mortgage payment. And then we have certain contractual obligations and, and supply, supplies and other costs that make up, round out the other large numbers in our budget. And you can see from this chart, the comparison, year over year. The column on the left, 16, 17. The column on the left, '16-'17 budget versus the column, the '17-'18 budget, or the preliminary budget that we're talking about tonight. So our salaries are going up about 3%, and that makes sense, given the fact that we, most of our contracts settled with a 3% increase for the '17-'18 school year. Our benefits, this is a little aggressive. We're looking at about a 3.64% increase in benefits. We work with a number of different folks to look at our benefits, and we look at that regularly through the budget process. So we hope that that's the increase we'll experience. That increase would be lower than most of the school districts here in central New York. And we've done a lot of work in our healthcare and benefits, and our bargaining units have as well. And so we hope that 3.64% is where the budget lands. Debt service is down. That's because some of our projects have fallen off. We're still studying debt service as we are building aid, so that number I expect will change a little bit. Other expenditures, contractual, BOCs and supplies and other, we're trying to be as tight as we possibly can and keep those at reasonable levels. And we're looking at an overall expense increase of about 2.2%. So if you've been paying attention, you see that as of right now, our expenditures exceed our revenues. And again, we're hopeful that as the state finalizes the budget, we get more state aid. Talking about our expenditures, just to hit a couple highlights here. Our health benefits, as I mentioned, we're expecting a lower increase than the rest of the market. We'll continue to watch that before we finalize the budget. Our retirement costs, our TRS, that's our Teacher Retirement System, is actually down from 11.72% of payroll to about 9.8% of payroll. And our ERS, that's our Employee Retirement System, all other employees, that's remaining at the same funding level as '16-'17, or about 15.8%. As I mentioned earlier, we settled most of our contracts at about 3%, so that's the salary increase we're seeing. Fuel costs, if you've been following, I think gasoline right now is about 50 cents a gallon higher than it was 12 months ago. It's a pretty volatile market. We get transportation aid, so it's tricky to budget our fuel costs because, yes, when costs go up, we get more aid, and when they go down, we get less aid. So it's not as big a factor, but we watch that closely because we got a lot of buses on the road and we burn a lot of fuel. Energy costs, we're in a three-year supply agreement that we cooperate with a number of BOCs districts. We've locked in those energy costs, and in some respects, we've done well, and in others, we haven't. It's a pretty volatile market. So I think our budget is adjusted accordingly to reflect those contractual prices. BOCs, we continue to look at opportunities to work with BOCs, both from a cost control perspective and, most importantly, to provide the best services to our students and staff. And so we haven't finalized our BOCs budget yet. We'll be working on that over the next month. The number I have in here contemplates the services we currently have under contract with adjustments for the things we know we're going to change, as well as a little bit of cushion in there for things that pop up as we finish up through the budget process and frankly embark on the next year. We seem to find that our BOCs services balloon a little bit as we get into the school year, and we want to make sure we're properly budgeted for that. I also want to mention that there was an audit of BOCs. The Controller's Office audited BOCs and looked at how the Regional Information Center is providing services. And so we've had to adjust our staffing, particularly in our IT department, to be in conformance with the Controller's Audit. The concept is that a district cannot subscribe to a service that is staffed with more than 0.6 of an employee. It truly has to be a cooperative service. And so we currently have some employees in our IT department, for example, that are full-time employees basically of the district. And so we're going to be making some adjustments there, and we'll be keeping you posted as we come through the budget process. Expenditures per pupil, I like to show this chart every year, and I want to make sure that people clearly understand, North Syracuse has been second to last in the district, or I'm sorry, in our BOCs region, and among the lowest spending per pupil districts in the state. There's less than 700 districts, just shy of 700 districts in the state, and we are 669 on the list. Now, that's not because we're cheap and we don't want to spend money on our students, because we spend every penny we have. And when you take our total budget and, you know, give or take, and you divide that by the number of students, that's the number. So if we were to receive more foundation aid, we'd spend more money on students, and we'd move up in that list. But again, just so you know, we're working on a tight budget when you compare us to other school districts. And I also want to emphasize, I didn't put the slide up here, but we look at our numbers versus comparable districts throughout the state, large districts like ours. And North Syracuse still comes in among one of the most efficient or lower spending districts in the state. And other districts on this list are large districts like Syracuse. On the list is Liverpool, and FM, and JD, and they're all, and Baldwinville. And they're those numbers there. I didn't put their names, but they spend more money than we do per pupil. So now talking about our vehicle bonding proposition, it's important that we keep our fleet reasonably current. And our kind of overarching goal is, we don't really want to have buses on the road that are over 10 years old. And in order to do that, we've been purchasing about 10 65-passenger diesel buses each year. That allows us to dispose of 10 buses a year, and that avoids the long-term maintenance costs, out-of-warranty repairs, and frankly increases the reliability of our fleet. We are the only district in central New York that triple-trips our kids. That means that we pick up the high school and junior high, and then those same buses run around and grab all the middle school kids, and then those same buses run around and hit six elementary schools. So we really get a lot out of our fleet, and it's really important that we keep it current. We're going to buy 10, we're planning on buying, subject to the board's approval, we'll buy 10, and the taxpayers will buy 10 65-passenger buses, 1 42-passenger bus to assist with our special needs population, as well as a 48-passenger bus, and then one plow truck. We have a plow truck that is really old, and in this snowy environment, we desperately need to replace that truck. Total estimated cost of the 13 vehicles is about $1.6 million. That is almost within $10,000 or $15,000 of the number we spent last year. And the impact on a home is about $2.10 a year for a $100,000 home before star. And keep in mind, we get a fair amount of transportation aid, so it's very wise for us to keep our fleet current. Shifting to the district's financial position, right now, we have an unassigned fund balance. That's our fund balance. And what it means unassigned, it's not designated for any specific purpose, of about $7.5 million. This preliminary budget contemplates using about $1.6 million of that fund balance, which would leave us about $5.9 million in fund balance this year, assuming we don't have any material variances in revenue or expenses. And as of this date, we do not, so we're assuming that that impact would be zero. That means that our fund balance would be about 3.72% of our projected budget for next year, which is less than the New York State target of 4%. So while we're in better shape than we were five years ago, we are still not, when you think about the scale of our budget, to have those funds in reserve is very wise, should some unforeseen event take place. Other reserves are those that are specifically designated. Tax sertiori, that's when people contest their real estate assessments, and we're forced to settle or provide a refund or lower their taxes. And so we've got about $1.4 million in there, and that is based on a specific list of open claims that taxpayers have made against the district for contesting their taxes and their assessment. The same thing with workman's comp. Those numbers there of $2.1 million are backed up by specific claims and reserve estimates that our third-party administrator has provided to us. We have a very small general liability reserve for miscellaneous items that come up, and we have a capital reserve. As you know, we're embarking on the Bear Road Elementary School project, and we have numerous capital projects with the large scale of our 10 K-12 buildings and all of the support buildings that we have. We need that reserve to help us with future projects. So again, our reserves are a little lower next year than they are this year, mostly due to the expanding size of our budget, the growth of our budget. But at 3.86%, our reserves are probably less than most districts here in our BOCs region. So in summary, while the governor's proposal does show an increase of about 1.9 million or 2.9%, I can't say it enough, our foundation aid is woefully inadequate. It will not allow us to provide a sound, basic education in accordance with this Campaign for Equity Lawsuit. Our preliminary tax increase, about 3%. Again, that's at the cap, so that would require a simple majority, and the taxpayers would receive their rebate checks under that scenario. Our initial budget has expenditures increasing by about $3.4 million or 2.2% and revenues increasing only about 1.48%, or about $2.3 million. So we're working on a deficit right now. I've already talked about state aid and the tax levy. We've got about a deficit of about $1.1 million. That's the gap we have to close here through either budget deliberations and cuts between now and April 10th, in conjunction with additional state aid. And we're still working on a few key items. There's been a lot of talk, although I didn't hear it tonight, in the Bear Road discussion about our special ed staffing with our new model. We're looking really closely at that now that we've got a year, or almost a year under our belt, and we're looking at how to make sure that that staffing's adequate, among a number of other items. So again, I want to emphasize, this is a preliminary budget, but it's our first pass, and I welcome any questions that the board may have. The election data is the same, or election is May 16th. We're going to run the same poll time, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., polling at both Cisroell and the district office. And I look forward to another budget update and discussion with the board on the 20th of March, again, with a goal of adopting the budget on April 10th and the vote on May 16th. Any questions? Thank you.
Since we're at 8 o'clock, and I know all these high school seniors want to get home and spend the next two hours studying, so we'll take a little break so we can sign all of those forms for those young men and women.
Are we done with the projector, Doc? We shut that off.
Done with the projector, right?
Yeah, well, we got the...
No, we got the Smart Schools.
Smart Schools.
He'll just kill the light.
Line up, folks.
I do.
Pretty anxious, Mike. Good idea.
Hi, how are you? Good thing, oh, sorry. Lucky you.
There you go, Connor. Thank you. You bet.
Thank you. There you go. You're welcome.
Come on down.
Hello, Jess. How are you, honey? Good, thank you.
How are you, sir? Go.
Joy of evening.
I will.
You signed it, just signed it over to me. How are you? See? You are being nice tonight, I'm shocked. Oops, wait a minute.
Turning over a new leaf.
You are? March 1st is coming up, you're a little late on that.
Probably mispronouncing something.
You're too late, too late for your, you know...
Tina Rupert, Cheryl Mondo, Bill Pryor, Karen Dispirito.
Don't bother either.
These are kids, I think. And Jekyll and...
Got to be Galilin?
Yeah, I guess.
Jalen, right? Jalen.
Oh, Jalen, yeah.
Jalen, Galilin. I hope it don't box him again.
Oh, my gosh. I'm with you. Anytime, absolutely.
You leaving, Bob?
No, I don't think so. Are you leaving? No, he wants to hear the...
One of the cadets. He's a cadet, I think. Yeah. Well, one of them. Yeah, this is yellow. Okay. Yes, sir? Okay, the next item on the agenda, individuals wishing to address the Board of Education. We have six names this evening. Would remind everybody about the three-minute limit, and Connie is setting her clock as we speak. Ready to go? The first to sign is Tina Rupert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tina Rupert. I am a fourth-grade teacher at Roxboro Road Elementary School. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak on behalf of my building. It's apparent that our district is facing challenges district-wide, including budgetary concerns, as we just heard. We appreciate how hard our Board of Education works to decide on how to fund our programs in the district. Seeing as each building in our district has their own obstacles to face, we ask that the board consider looking at the needs of each individual building when you're making the important decisions. Roxboro Road Elementary School is a high-needs building with a large transient population. We have an increased level of homelessness, which contributes to many of our social and emotional issues of our students. A majority of our students come from a high-poverty background, meaning they come to us behind socially, emotionally, and academically. Our students are starting off their school careers below the average child, which leaves it up to our staff to attempt to help them bridge the educational gaps. Our AIS and RTI staff are overburdened with their numbers swelling each day. We need a full-time counselor and social worker. We need those staff every day to assist our students with their day-to-day mental health and coping needs. Research shows that classroom learning is difficult when a child's basic needs are not met. We feel investing in additional mental health support for our building would be an investment in our students' future. There's not enough staffing in our special education settings, especially our CTD rooms, which impacts the academic instruction and safety of all of our students and staff. This also affects special area classes as well. Students' learning are often interrupted by students who are having emotional and behavioral issues and may need to be removed from the classroom, which leaves the regular ed teacher with limited or no support for the remaining students with IEPs. Couple this with a lack of proper training and support, and we have a recipe for educational disaster. Special education-related service providers like our speech and OT and PT have been cut to the point that they only have time to service their students. And just like our CTD teachers, their hours do not take into account the high caseloads and the time needed to complete evaluations and parent conferences, CSEs, and Medicaid reimbursement forms. These individuals cannot service their students and complete all of their other duties without sacrificing student sessions. As you're aware, the lack of substitute teachers is at a critical level district-wide. Too often, either our computer TA or AIS TA is asked to teach a class for the day. CTD rooms have had their CTD teacher cover as a sub, which in turn puts the room out of compliance. Another option has been to divide the students in the class lacking a sub into other classrooms. None of these solutions are in the best interest of our students. Because of all this, we often wonder, what is the success rate for our students as they climb the educational ladder to graduation? If we don't have the resources to help them while they're here, we're setting them up for possible failure throughout their school career. It's important for all of you to understand that what we have right now, it's just not working. Decisions cannot be made using numbers on paper. Each building has separate needs that need to be evaluated individually. We're not numbers. We are people working hard for our students. The teachers at Roxboro Road Elementary, as well as district-wide, are willing to do anything that we can to support our students' education. But the more we take on, the less we can give. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tina.
Those three minutes.
Android, the battery be dead.
You ready to go, Connie? Okay. Cheryl Mondo, please.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Mondo, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the staff at Roxboro Road Middle School. I have been employed in North Syracuse as a language teacher since the year 2000. I am a classroom teacher, student council advisor, and a former girls' lacrosse coach. And for the past eight years of my career, I have been a traveling teacher for my building as well. We at Rox Middle, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. We are here tonight to share with you some of the components of our school that impact our teaching and the learning of our unique and diverse students. At Rox Middle, we serve as an extended family to our students to support a stable influence in their daily lives. Our families seek to manage the tensions of financial hardships, which have become greater in the last few years. For example, when we sat before you in 2015, our free and reduced lunch community was at 47%. Today, at 52% of our school...
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Mondo, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the staff at Roxboro Road Middle School. I have been employed in North Syracuse as a language teacher since the year 2000. I am a classroom teacher, student council advisor, and a former girls' lacrosse coach. And for the past eight years of my career, I have been a traveling teacher for my building as well. We at Rox Middle, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. We are here tonight to share with you some of the components of our school that impact our teaching and the learning of our unique and diverse students. At Rox Middle, we serve as an extended family to our students to support a stable influence in their daily lives. Our families seek to manage the tensions of financial hardships, which have become greater in the last few years. For example, when we sat before you in 2015, our free and reduced lunch community was at 47 percent. Today, at 52 percent of our school community receives free and reduced lunch. Our children are increasingly impacted by social, emotional, and intellectual and physical health issues. Many factors have made it become challenging to meet the needs of all students when needs are so vast and resources are so limited. As you can imagine, strong connections in a school with high poverty are incredibly important. Knowing this, the two major factors that impact our school community and its success are lack of full-time staff members and the time constraints of our middle school master schedule. The impact of staff cuts dating back to the 2008-2009 school year has resulted in an increase of class size for our entire building and a dramatic increase of traveling and part-time teachers, which is unique to our building. Over the past eight years, we have seen our class sizes rise, accompanied by a continual decrease in staff, as well as a continual turnover of those part-time staff members. Part-time staff impacts the most on our 7th grade staff and master schedule, which includes 16 part-time teachers. Some are only in our building for one class every other day. Not only does this impact their availability to connect with our students, but it also impacts their ability to be collaborative with the teaching staff and to become accustomed to the culture of our building. Making and maintaining important connections with our students is difficult, and furthermore, this impacts our students in what they find a challenge to manage how they're going to be able to connect with their teachers. Also, with reduced staff, our ability to manage building duties and have sufficient supervision of our student body has been severely limited. Our SRO building time is only every other day, furthering the divide between community and school. This year, we have implemented a new special education delivery model which focuses on a co-teaching environment. However, we struggle to make this model work due to insufficient staffing to truly provide an inclusive environment, which is based on collaboration, assessment of data, and co-teaching. Due to this, the model is compromised.
Thank you, Cheryl. We're going to get the rest of it off the...
I would really like to read the rest of this. I sat for everyone else, and I would really appreciate three more minutes of your time.
No, it's three minutes per speaker, and we do hold to that, so... We'll get the rest of it. It's submitted to us in writing, so we will get the rest of it there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jill Pryor, please.
Good evening. I'm going to try to talk really fast. My name is Jill Pryor. I am a school psychologist at Main Street, and the staff at Main Street would like to thank the Board of Education and the district for your continued support of our program. We are here tonight to raise awareness for our continued, of our continued struggle to provide high-quality early education to our students in the current economic climate. When your business is educating preschoolers with special needs alongside their typical peers, the process of problem-solving and prioritizing is painstaking. When cuts are made year after year, it becomes increasingly difficult to maintain high quality. The simple fact is that cuts in education never heal. Counties have been mandated to fund preschool special education since 1989, when Section 4410 of the New York State Education Law was adopted. State formulas for rate-setting, reimbursement, and reconciliation are in need of reform. The district employs the staff at Main Street and owns the building. We do understand that the budget for Main Street School is separate from the district budget. We wish to note that the majority of the students at Main Street are district students, who are likely to require less interventions at school age due to their special class-integrated setting experience. Throughout recent years, the following staffing cuts have been made due to budgetary constraints, and they have negatively impacted student learning and achievement. 45 percent reduction in speech therapists, 50 percent reduction in occupational therapists, 50 percent reduction in physical therapists, 33 percent reduction in special education teachers, 33 percent reduction in school psychologists, 49 percent reduction in teaching assistants, 100 percent reduction in adaptive physical education teachers, 100 percent reduction in social work services, 100 percent reduction in the summer school principal position. We would like to offer possible solutions for your consideration. Advocate to impact policymakers who set tuition rates, reimbursement procedures, and maximum grouping ratios at the state level to reflect real-world costs and real preschooler's special needs. Expand access to grant writers and continue to provide information that may yield other sources of revenue, such as UPK expansion grants. Collaborate in district initiatives, such as technology integration and professional development, to help our staff stay current, to provide high-quality educational experiences. Continue to partner on the Smart Schools Bond Act monies to address much-needed modernization of our preschool facility. Promote the work of our nonprofit friends of the North Syracuse Early Education Program Group to defray any costs allowed. Continue to work diligently to find a solution in order to serve this most vulnerable population in a way that will provide educational experiences and opportunities that appropriately support and inspire all students to reach their individual potential as productive citizens. We thank you for your time, and again, for your continued support. We will provide you with a hard copy of our white paper and slideshow. We look forward to working with you toward any possible solutions and better supporting our very youngest students of North Syracuse. And as Dr. Seuss once said, "Don't give up. I believe in you all. A person is a person, no matter how small." Thank you very much.
Karen Dispirito, please.
Hello, everyone. Okay, thanks. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Karen Dispirito. I'm a 2nd-grade teacher at Smith Road. This is a second career for me, and I absolutely love what I do, and I'm so happy to be here with you, bring our concerns to you. First, we'd like to thank you for taking action on our 2015 White Paper Concerns. We want to thank you for putting in place the necessary steps to place special needs students in their home schools and for hiring more school counseling staff. Both of these district changes have addressed the needs of our needy students. Smith Road has almost, like other buildings, 49 percent free and reduced lunch population, creating a host of academic, emotional, and socio-economic concerns. Thank you also for keeping class sizes smaller, particularly in grades K to 1. Smaller class sizes for our youngest learners create an environment so necessary for optimum academic success. Teachers are better able to proactively implement early literacy interventions, helping more students achieve. This step is critical in setting the stage for meeting our New York State standard of ensuring that all students become proficient readers by 3rd grade. Special education concerns we'd like to share with you. Moving students to home schools was very beneficial. However, the new model was not staffed based on student need, which directly affects the physical safety of all the students in the staff. There is a consistent inequity of distribution of support staff across the district. Please assign more support staff to higher-needs buildings. Increase of severe behaviors is seen more often in regular education classrooms. Restraining students has developed additional safety concerns. Using less staff to attend to bigger, more emotionally-involved students safely is impossible. TAs are subbing for teachers, as was also stated, and being split between grade levels. When there are increased needs in any blended classroom, this leaves the other blended room without coverage. This is a dangerous situation, causing safety concerns for both the staff and the students. Some special needs students require two people for lifting, and there is not enough staff to accommodate this need, so therefore, we need to be more proactive in protecting the staff and particularly the students to prevent personal injury. New special education model makes it difficult to meet the needs of newly identified students throughout the year. Teachers are unable to provide the necessary services for all students, pushing and pulling out services. Our scheduled providers cannot physically be in two places at one time servicing all the students. TAs and special educators are not in the same classroom at the same time, therefore, there's not enough time for teachers to model or discuss what's expected from the TAs to carry out instruction. All students do not receive services when there is lack of CSE coverage.
Thank you very much, Karen.
And you have the document for you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We have two more speakers wish to address this on the Science Olympiad. Christina Scalzo, please. Mind you, Christina, for three minutes, and she's got the time. Perfect, perfect.
Hello, my name is Christina Scalzo. I am here to talk about getting Science Olympiad recognized as a club again. This is not the first time I've had to come to talk to a board meeting to fight for a club that means everything to me. Not only am I involved in this club, but my whole family is too. My older sister competed in Science Olympiad, and my younger brother started competing in Science Olympiad last year. Science runs through our veins. My dad and my grandpa helped my siblings and I build and study for our events. The things I have learned and the contraptions I have built have all been worth it. I have a 6-by-4-by-1-foot bass musical instrument sitting in my garage that my dad and my grandpa helped me build in one week. I have learned the names of about 100 fossils. My partner for that event still quizzes me if she sees a fossil. For three years, I competed in an event that enhanced my skills to create an experiment, to perform the experiment, and to write up a lab on the experiment. None of this would be possible without the friends and partners I have made along the way since 8th grade. I discovered my love for science through Science Olympiad. I've met many science teachers that support us and believe in us. The day before our invitationals at Cornell University, all of the science teachers that helped each and every one of us were wearing a Science Olympiad shirt. To see them supporting us was so inspiring. My point is, why get rid of a club that works so hard? I stay after on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and sometimes Monday, even though I do not have a specific event on that day. This club means so much to the people that compete in it. On March 10th and 11th, our state competition may very well be my last competition, and I want to be prepared to bring home a medal. I've gone to states every year that I've competed with Division C. I will miss all the fun that I had, all the friends that I made, and all of the pictures I have taken. Just because this may be my last competition does not mean that I will ever forget about Science Olympiad. Next Saturday, I am helping out at my brother's competition. I'm going to do what my sister did when she went on to college. She came back to help at my brother's competition and mine. Even though this is my last year, I will never stop fighting for this club. I want my brother and incoming students to enjoy the experiences I had. Thank you for listening, and please consider reading.
Thank you very much, Christina. Jalen, and I'm not going to, I can't weed your handwriting.
Gurelik.
Gurelik, thank you.
Well, I'm Jalen Gurelik, and I'm a sophomore at CNS High School, and I'm an avid athlete and enthusiast for the sciences. Since I was growing up, I guess I was the girl in the back of the class that no one really ever wanted to talk to because either she would spit too many science facts at you, or she didn't really know what to say. And that's really kind of here why, why it's weird that I'm here today, especially talking to a club that means so much to me. I never used to really raise my hand in classes because I never wanted to seem like a know-it-all, and you would kind of like bury down like your deep, dark secrets of like, oh, I actually like comic books, and I can list all the elements of the periodic table. It's like dirty little secrets you don't want anyone to know. Well, that's how I kind of felt growing up my entire life. I didn't really know what to say or really what to do, like, no one else could talk to me about bacteria, and that's the only thing I seemed to know about. And my teachers started to notice that I didn't socialize with other kids, and I didn't really have the ability to talk into, I don't even know how many people are here today. So, one day in 7th grade, my science teacher, Gary Liff, was like, he noticed that I began to distance myself from other people, and he said, "Well, you have 100 in my class, you might like this club." It was called Science Olympiad. I couldn't wait till 8th grade to join this club, and when I first got there, I wasn't intimidated at all. I met over 30 kids who have the same interests as me, which is kind of weird. I've never met 30 kids who can talk to you about protozoa, ever. This club has taught me social skills, problem-solving skills. I can sit in a test for 15 minutes, and I can talk to you about diseases that, no offense to you guys, but you guys probably wouldn't know about. You can give me a list of symptoms and names of diseases, and I can tell you what they're caused by and how to prevent them in less than 15 minutes. This club means the world to me. I've created memories and friends and relationships with people that I never thought I could. I couldn't hold a conversation with a person for more than two minutes, and now I can hold a conversation with people for more than 50, explaining my dirty little secrets, AKA protozoa. But I don't want other people and other kids who don't recognize themselves as a person because the club that could help them isn't recognized. It's important. It's not just a nerd club. It's not just people who bond over nerdy things or geeky things. It's a club that's helping other students, not only to grow intellectually, but socially, and just, I can't express this enough. Please. I'm not a beggar, and I feel really greedy asking for this, but, I mean, it helps a lot of students, over hundreds of students. And CNS, we're quite good at it. We just placed 2nd in regionals, Division C. And Division B, they've been going to states every single year. Our trophy cases at the junior high and the high school are bigger than our trophy cases are combined, are bigger than our athletic trophy cases. Thank you for today.
Thank you, Jalen. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night. Next item on the agenda, board committee reports, comments. Liz?
Yeah, our next legislative meeting is Wednesday. We are planning for our March 9th forum entitled "How Equitable Funding Promotes School Success." We are joining with Liverpool Central School District to try and entice the governor to give us our due amount of money.
Thank you. Anything, Paul, you want to add on to that? No? Mary, policy coming up?
Yep. We did not have a policy committee meeting for February because we were all caught up on our review. So, the next meeting is March 14th. It's a Tuesday.
Any other comments, board members?
I want to mention that the majority of the board went to the OCM-Bosse Legislative Breakfast two weeks ago. Really great turnout to represent not only North Syracuse, but the entire Bosse's region. They stated several times that they got over twice as many people as they expected, which is really great considering the amount of legislative difficulty that all of our school districts are going through to receive state aid funding. Great event. We talked to Al Sterpi, John D. Francisco, Valesky, all of our legislators here, and we voiced our concerns. We had a Q&amp;A session. I don't know if Annette has anything to add further for that, but I do know the majority of the board was there, and I believe we all felt it was incredibly valuable.
Y'all, any other board members? Annette, your comments?
So, just to add to what Mike just said, you know, thank you, because many of you were there, and we had a great, a great presence, and I think a lot of good points were made with our legislators, and we'll continue to make good points with them throughout the budget process. Again, a reminder, we hope to pack the auditorium at the junior high school with a forum on March 9th, so we hope to see all of you there. Bring your friends, bring your neighbors. And I want to thank Don for a very thorough budget presentation this evening. I know he's been working hard on the budget. We are just about to enter the main part of the budget process, so I am reminding the board budget subcommittee you will be hearing from us because we're going to need to have you in to kind of get some input and some feedback and begin making some decisions soon, so we'll be in contact.
Thank you. Item five, routine action items. A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of February 6, 2017. B, consideration of the classification and school placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. And D, acknowledgement of business office reports. I will entertain a motion to approve 5 A, B, C, D as a group. Mr. Leon, second. Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Carried. Six, discussion and action items. Six A, acknowledgement of a gift. Roxboro Road Middle School was awarded $10,000 from the Campbell's Grandstand for School Sweepstakes. The gift will go towards improving the school relationship with local families, one of the three areas of focus for their LAP plan. I'll entertain a motion to... I'll entertain a motion to approve that above gift. Mr. Fafalia, Ms. Cash, all in favor? Six B, we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the Smart Schools Spending Plan Investment Plan Number Three. So we need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Scanlon, second. Mr. Marizio, all in favor? And then C, let me get it to come up. Here it comes. This is to call to order the public hearing on the North Syracuse Central School District Smart Schools Spending Investment Plan Number Three. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the public hearing will be adjourned, and there will be a call to order for the continuation of the regular meeting of the Board of Education. So I need a motion to call to order the public hearing of the North Syracuse Central School District Smart Schools Spending Plan Investment Plan Number Three. Mr. Marizio, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Mr. Keegan will do a presentation, and then we'll ask if there's any comments from the public, so...Mr. Keegan?
If it's okay with the board, the presentation that I have tonight is the same presentation that we presented about six weeks ago. And I can quickly, if it's okay, everybody I think is familiar with the Smart Schools Spending Plan, or I should say, the Bond Act, has no impact on property taxes in the...it's a separately-funded item, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to just talk a little bit about what this third spending plan includes. We've had great success with Chromebooks, and so we'd like to buy more. We'd like to spend about $833,000 with this spending plan, $469,000 on Chromebooks, about $200,000 on desktop computers and monitors, some Chromebook carts, and we're gonna, as we have in the past, we're gonna share with the non-public schools, St. Margaret's and St. Rose, some funds so that they can buy similar mobile devices for their students. And that's really the central theme of Investment Plan Three. If there's questions, I'd be happy to answer them after this. So we have over a million dollars left when we're done. This, if you remember, our first plan was over four, and so we'll have a little over a million when we're completed. Yeah, we're taking one step at a time. We don't necessarily have, you know, a plan for the next monies.
Good to have it if we need to...
Yep. And I should just say to the board that our wiring project is moving along very well. The high school's been completely rewired. We're testing and terminating those wires, getting ready to put the access points in so that that school will be completely wireless. The contractor has moved to the junior high and begun to pull wire there, and we'll be wiring in Main Street this summer to get that building wireless. So we're real happy with the way that's moving along, and I think you've heard from many of the buildings that have done their BPT presentations, that people like Chromebooks, they like the Google Chrome environment, and it's been very helpful in terms of education. So this is just more of the same here with Investment Plan Three.
Bring up the next page, Don, because you've got more stuff on the next one.
Yeah, so the next page talks a little bit about the switching gear that we need to buy for the junior high and Main Street. And so the...we've paid the contractors, or the contractors are working on the wiring. Now we have to install switches and access points that will make those buildings wireless, and that's what the balance of this is. So it's $833,000 on devices and $340,000 on other equipment for a total of 1.1, and that still leaves us over a million dollars left in the plan.
Let's first, any...this is a public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding the plan and the expenditure? I'd ask if there's any questions from the Board of Education. There being none, we're back to...I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you, Mr. Fafalia, second. Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? And now we'll move to six D, which is the actual approval of the North Syracuse Central School District Smart Schools Spending Investment Plan Number Three as presented. Mr. Marizio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? Okay, that is approved. Six E, resolution to increase retiree substitute rates. Don, as long as you're right there, why don't you just give us a refresher on this one?
Jason...
It may be Jason, yes.
Yeah, Jason might be...
It's a matter of...
As you may be aware, we utilize a number of retirees as substitutes, and as time goes on, we've actually seen a diminishment in the number of retirees coming back to work for us. When I analyzed the payment schedule, we realized that at one point, the board accepted a resolution to utilize the lowest rate of, within a bargaining unit, of its lowest-tiered employee as the rate of pay. And the last time that was done was ten years ago, and so we looked at the current bargaining unit contracts. We went to the hiring rate of the lowest tier within that bargaining unit, and that's what these dollar amounts reflect. We're hoping to increase the amount of participation of our retirees from those bargaining units to come back and work for us. They know our systems, they know our schools, they understand our procedures, and they're much more capable substitutes than people that just walk in off the street. So we'd like to utilize them more.
This is effective retro to February 7th on the resolution?
Yes.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution to increase the retiree substitute rates? Ms. Cash, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Approved. F, surplus of non-marketable and marketable equipment. Don, I assume, or...
Yeah, on the cafeteria...
Four tables here.
Yeah, those are broken cafeteria tables at Roxborough Road, so that's why they're not marketable.
Yeah, not marketable.
And so that's why we've been systematically replacing those.
Okay, is there a motion to declare that non-marketable surplus to be disposed? Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Fafalia, all in favor? B, we have some contract awards for the exterior entrance renovation. We did get one bid from Bellows Construction, $54,264. The second, signs and scoreboards, one bid for the full amount from EverSan at $195,000, a partial bid from Thoth, which did not meet the specification. So a motion is to award Contract 2017-11 to Bellows Construction Specialties in the amount of $54,264, and Contract 2017-12 to EverSan Inc. in the amount of $195,000, both as the most responsible bidders meeting the specification. There are motion to approve. Ms. Cash, Ms. Scanlon, second. All in favor? Instructional personnel, support personnel, administrative personnel. I would like to note the retirement of Anita Engel as a teacher aide after seventeen years of service, and Linda Jackson, Associate Principal at Rox Middle, after nine years of service. So we thank those people for their service and wish them well in retirement. Are there any questions on 7A, 7B, or 7C? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve those three as a group. Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Marizio, all in favor? And at this point, we need a motion for executive session for the purpose of, maybe, purpose of hearing a parental appeal of a superintendent's decision to receive an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of five individuals with action to follow on the parental appeal. Is there a motion to executive session? Mr. Leon, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? So move. Thank you.